Don't watch him. Hi, see you later. Anyway. Don't touch him.
I mean, I know what it is.
There he is.
Oh, I'm an idiot tomorrow. I am. No. Wow, that's the first time being an attorney has really been a better thing. Okay. We are a private firm. Um, we used to be in the name of our offices for the last couple of years, but now Clearwater.
Take care of this guy here, would you?
How are you doing?
David Banther, how are those kids?
They're, you know, causing trouble.
Are they causing trouble?
Oh, yeah, they, you know, that's one, that's one.
She's hard to keep up with right now. She goes nonstop, but she fights her sister, sister fights back, and it's, you know. You pray for bedtime, and then you gotta pray they stay in their bed.
I do, I have to keep them in line.
It's, it's by charter, fortunately.
They don't have a choice.
It's so much to do.
Help yourself.
For me, it's like...
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea. If I have some small dinner, I get...
I used to do that, too. I'd rush home. Now, like, you know, I just get...
It looked like they knew you. It was something between, it's not playing. It's something, I think it's Tuesday, it's my country going on.
Like, you know, reality shows, my little stuff. When I get home, after working this, Ruth knows, like, my dinner, I watch TV, I don't, I don't do anything else.
He's probably blocking off, blocking everybody out.
I don't have to think, I just watch it, enjoy it, laugh with it.
See if I know any names.
Real quick, note from Nancy Gorbey on the back. I don't want to... She visits the commission and is sponsored by, her comes out box number seventeen nineteen.
Yeah, put it on there.
Then we can, yeah, because then we get kind of pure charity stuff. Thank you, but she put this up on...
Mark, are you ready? Okay. I am now called to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July fifth, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty P.M. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Chair Terpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Thank you. Resolution, two thousand sixteen dash one, CRA budget resolution, Mr. Licoris.
Karen, go ahead and come up, and just, uh, basically, uh, we need to reload our money for our grants. And, uh, do you want to say anything, Karen, about, just a brief of, I know you gave a report before about what you've been doing with it, but...
Sure. Um, the facade grant and the new restaurant recruitment grant have been very successful. Um, as you know, the facade grant was started in two thousand eleven, so this is the fifth year. It was seeded with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have now utilized all of that money happily. Um, we have given out forty-seven facade grants over the past five years, um, totaling a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That money, in turn, leveraged, uh, one point five million in private investment into those properties. So it's been very, very successful. The restaurant recruitment grant was started in January of two thousand fifteen, um, and that was seeded with fifty-four thousand dollars. And we've given out eight of those so far. Some of the projects are still, have been approved, but haven't been reimbursed yet because they're still working on those. Um, but the total has been thirty-four thousand that we have, um, awarded in those restaurant grants so far, totaling one million in private investment. So, um, for both of those, it's been very successful. We're very pleased and thank you for your support in creating these new incentives. I think they made a big difference, um, within our community redevelopment area. So today, we were looking to, um, transfer money, um, from the CRA that's in the fund over to those line items so that we can continue offering the facade grant and the restaurant grant.
Thank you. Are, are there any public comments on this item? Here none, any commission comments? Vice Mayor Terpenny.
Thank you. Uh, Karen, you said that of the, um, funds that were used towards the grant program, that created over a million dollars in reinvestment? That's unbelievable.
Yeah, I mean, actually, the, the total, if, if everything was done, um, is almost three million dollars. That counts the projects that have not been completed yet, three million in private investment and two hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, from our grant funds.
Right.
So that's, I think, a great investment that we should be really proud of.
Sure. And then the hundred and fifty that we're putting back into the programs, you said that's coming out of the CRA fund?
Yeah, the CRA has the available funds, they're just not in that line item, so we just need to transfer it to that item so they can be, um, paid out of that line item.
Do you have any idea what the balance in the CRA fund will be after that transfer?
I think, Ron, do you remember it off the top of your head, because we just talked about it last week and... Just closed.
Yeah, I mean, it's a ballpark.
Uh, there's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the CRA fund. After the hundred and fifty thousand is taken out, that would leave the three hundred thousand dollars.
Wow, so that fund's been growing quite a bit over the last year, then. Thank you.
Commissioner Seber.
Well, you just answered that question that I had, but I want to thank you for all your hard work, and we've definitely seen the difference in, in the city, especially downtown, with, uh, those grants and what they've done with new businesses coming in and, and businesses fixing up their properties. So, uh, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, because in some of those cases, we wouldn't have had those businesses without those incentives to offer.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes, thank you, and again, I just echo what my colleagues have said, and I'm just very impressed. I, 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 I knew we've given them out, and they have been successful, but what, you, you said forty-four?
Forty-seven.
I mean, that, that's just a lot, so it's, it's evident by downtown, and I'm, 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 I'm very thankful for you sticking with, with this program and encouraging, you know, uh, you know, you know, further investment. Thank you.
Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you. Karen, this is amazing. I know, um, you know, when you first came to Tarpon, and you had a tough road ahead of you, um, but you're doing a great job. And this, this program here, I remember when we approved it back in, it was twenty-eleven, um, and it was slow-moving at, at first, but you have really, um, pushed it, you know, through the community, and when, I know when, you know, new businesses or people are talking about new businesses, you offer this program, and it, it's a huge success, and I want to thank you for all your hard work. It really is evident in, in the community, all the businesses that are coming around. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Slattery, those two are great grants, uh, great programs. Uh, remember when we started back in two thousand and ten, it was, uh, unsure how's that going to work out, and it worked out very well. Uh, not only that we got, um, uh, we got so much advantage as far as the, uh, the return that we got from the grants, but also purified that city as well. Uh, what I would like to, to ask, if it's possible, to provide us a list of the people that use these grants when, when we visit them, to tell them that, you know, how good they did, and the ones that haven't used them yet, that they are eligible to use it. So if you provide us that, I think it's going to be helpful to us.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, are we entertaining a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'll read the title. This is CRA Resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh-one, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen. Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Chair Terpenny?
Yes.
Chair Alahuzis.
Yes. That concludes the CRA meeting, and it's adjourned at, uh, six thirty-seven. We're now, we're now going to, uh, the regular session. I'm now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July fifth, two thousand sixteen, and the time is six thirty-eight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Slattery?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will begin by Reverend Bob Russell, the family, from the Family of Faith Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge, allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we ask for guidance and patience for this council meeting. Give each city leader the wisdom and compassion to make the right decisions to grow our town. Father, I ask that you bless each and every one that works towards the accomplishments of Tarpon Springs, our police department, fire department, utility departments, and all those who work for the city. As our city shows unity in its population, let its attitude spread towards this county, state, and yes, our country. Yesterday, we celebrated the two-hundred-and-fortieth anniversary of our independence. Our forefathers gave everything for our freedoms that we take for granted. Our nation has lowered their morals, our nation has lowered their values, and the people have lowered their pride in our country. Today, so many are wanting to take, not money, not many enough to give. Bless those men and women around this planet who are ready to give their lives to protect the freedoms that we so take for granted, serving in our armed forces. God Almighty, we thank you for your grace and blessings, and we give you all our love, in Jesus' name, and we all say amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please seat it. We now go to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed this evening. See none. We're going to move to the item number one. Commissioner, uh, Slattery, we will read, we will read the proclamation on Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part, integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Tarpon Springs, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all, of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the city of Tarpon Springs recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Commissioner Susan Slattery, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby recognize the month of July two thousand sixteen as Park and Recreation Month. And, is somebody here? Oh, this is our hot dog eating contest person right here. Thank you for everything you do.
You're very welcome.
We have an awesome rec department.
Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Sure.
You.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'm very happy to be part of the Park and Rec Department here. We have incredible parks, um, and they keep on getting better. I want to thank the board for continuing to support us and giving us the money to enhance all our parks. This past year, we have been wonderful. We have been in the forefront with new, I would say, equipment at our parks. If you haven't been out to our sports complex or our splash park, we have a new swing that is for, um, parents and children together. It's one swing combined for parents and toddlers, which is amazing. We were the first in the county to have it, which is always good. And going forward, we just had our picnic in the park, where I will, I'm pleased to say, gave out fifteen hundred hot dogs for the crowd. Um, it was amazing. People enjoyed it, stayed the whole time. Um, and Thursday, we have a concert on the beach, so we have those every month, and without your support, um, this wouldn't happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And please say thank you to all the people that worked on the picnic, that did an excellent job.
I will do.
It was very successful.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? See none, any commissions comment? No. Okay, now we'll move into the, uh, item number two, presentation for the officer Tommy Nguyen and K-9 Dobies. Chief Coach.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners, City Manager. First, I want to recognize some people in the audience today. We have Major Young and Major Templeton here, along with some of TSPD's finest. We also have, uh, Tommy and Ernie here, also known as K-9 Dobies, and we have Tom Dobies here, who's a big supporter of, uh, our program and always has been, and thank you very much for coming here tonight, Tom. I want to go through a quick PowerPoint on our dog being the number-one dog for drug detection in the whole United States. That is just an unbelievable feat. Um, but Tommy's work ethic and Dobie's work ethic is off the charts. Um, they went through the regionals, they went to the nationals, and he kept texting me, and, you know, "Chief, I think I'm doing good. I think I'm doing good." And I'm like, "All right, you know, go, Tommy, go." And next thing I know, he goes, "Chief, I'm number one." I said, "Number one, what?" He goes, "I'm number one in the whole country." And I'm, almost tears came to my eyes, because I know how hard the guy works, and we train with, you know, my dog and his dog, and he's just such a great guy, but Tommy, you really, you really give it all, and, and you've earned it. There's no doubt about it, it just wasn't handed to you. So let me go through a quick PowerPoint, just, um, explains really what he went through in the, in the regionals and the nationals, and then, um, I'll work a little bit with the mayor, and we'll, uh, we'll bring Tommy up. So in two thousand sixteen, uh, February twenty-eighth, March fourth, Tommy went to USPCA Region One Field Trial Trials in Walton County, Florida. This is for the region. Obviously, he placed really high in that, in that competition, and there were dogs from the southeast there, and that, um, basically allowed him to compete in the Philly National Trials. So Officer Nguyen and K-9 Dobies placed second in room searches and second place overall with a total score of a hundred ninety-seven point six seven out of a possible two hundred points in the Region One Field Trials. Their performance qualified Officer Nguyen and K-9 Dobies for the National Detection Trials, June fifth through the eighth, two thousand sixteen, in Philadelphia. That's just some of the, um, some of the trophies and some of the pictures that were taken in the regionals. So this is the two thousand sixteen Philadelphia Detector Trials, June fifth through eight, two thousand sixteen. Officer Nguyen and K-9 Dobies took first place for region team, third place for room search, and brought home the coveted award of Top Dog, first place in the nation for drug detection. That is just so awesome. First place for region team, Tommy Nguyen, TSPD, Chris Wantama, Walton County SO, that was a team trial. And first place for region team, Tommy Nguyen, TSPD, Chris Walton Ma, Walton County SO. And then Tarpon Springs Police Department's winning team, also Nguyen and K-9 Dobies. You can see all the trophies up here, um, that they won, and, uh, this is quite an arduous task. These dogs and the K-9 handlers are really put to, put to work to earn this, so... A lot of kudos to Tommy. Tommy, can you come down, please? Yeah. I'm gonna, um, do you want to say anything? I mean, come on, come on, talk, say something. Ernie can talk after, is that good?
Yeah, he can bark.
He can bark?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Chief, and everybody here. He sent me to the, uh, National Trial for the Competition Night. He kept pushing me, he's like, "Go, take I ninety-five and take, go, go." I never, I never been out, uh, Florida, so I was scared, you know, like, man, I know, we're driving that far. He's like, "Take I ninety-five and keep going." So that's what I did. I went up there, we, uh, we had a total of dogs, with sixty-five, sixty-five dogs and thirty-five, uh, team for the drugs, uh, search, they say, uh, competition. So I was, you know, kind of nervous and scared, because that's my first time, and, um, we, the first day, we did pretty awesome, and the second day, we did great, and I still like, you know what, I, I, I don't know if I get anything. I hope I get top ten, I'd be happy, you know, or top three, that'd be awesome. So when I had the mini trophy there the first time, I'm like, "Yeah, I got insurance, I'm good to go." And then finally, I got a second one, I said, "Man, that's awesome." And then when I got a biggest one, um, I was nervous, and I'm like, "Hey, um, two thousand sixteen, um, USPCA Champion, Tarpon Spring PD," you know, I'm like, "Whoa, that was awesome." So I got all three trophy, and, um, you know, before, the thing is, before, when I get there, nobody know where is Tarpon Springs. They're like, "Where you from? Tarpon Springs? Where is that at?" I said, "Uh, in Florida." And they're like, "Uh, so, is that close to Tampa?" I said, "Yep, close to Tampa, close to Clearwater." So, and I, I got a pass, I give it to them, and after I got a big trophy, I said, "Yeah, it is Tarpon Springs right here." So everybody know Tarpon Springs now, you know? So that, uh, that the best part, and, uh, uh, Mr. Dobies here, he helping us out a lot with, uh, donating a dog and stuff like that, so... I mean, I'm really, uh, appreciative for all his job and, uh, chief, they have, uh, have the opportunity for me to do all this stuff, and this is the best job for me. I, I, this is my dream to be a K-9 handler, and that's what I get, and it's awesome.
Great.
Dobies, you want to say anything? You want to talk? You know, it's funny, the phrase "I ninety-five north," I knew that well, because when I moved from New York thirty years ago, southern folks always tell me, "Ninety-five north." So, you know, you got that, Tommy. But, uh, Mayor, I want to turn this over to you. Um, the commission wants to recognize you, Tommy, so if you guys come up.
Officer Nguyen, we have an achievement award for you. Outstanding achievement, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes Officer Tommy Nguyen and K-9 Dobies, Tarpon Springs Police Department, for their outstanding performance at the United States Police K-9 Association National Detectors Trials. Congratulations. Tommy, we also have a gift, uh, a gift award for, um, K-9 Dobies, so if you please buy a toy.
Oh, absolutely.
This is from us, from the FBOC. Thank you, congratulations.
I got Dobie's little treat, some food, but it's, it's healthy stuff, because I know he's on a, oh, don't give him, don't bring him. I didn't want to give it to him, because I don't know if he'd come at me. But it's healthy, so I know it's in his diet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to say a few words about my good friend, Tommy Dobies, which I know from Tarpon High School. We were, we were in high school together. Tommy's always been a very kind, a very generous person. He has done so much to Tarpon Springs, he's so generous. He not only helped, and he, uh, contributed to, uh, the city of Tarpon Springs and to our police department, but he helped so many people here in Tarpon Springs. Tommy, I want to thank you. Are any commission comments? Commissioner Banther.
Yes, uh, well, as I said, in, though, um, in your letter and, 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 and to the chief, I was surprised, but not surprised. Um, I mean, your hard work I've seen at, at the Citizens Academy and around town, and your, uh, regional championship, so, uh, we are all very, very proud of you and all the, that, that, that you've accomplished, and, uh, you know, anything like that puts the city on the map, and I guarantee you, everyone in that room now knows where Tarpon Springs is. And I, but I also heard that your AC went out when you were driving home. Next time, just get that fixed. You don't have to drive home in that. We're, we're, we're all, we're all proud of you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
Well, again, I just, you know, I can't thank you enough for, for all you do for us, and I, I know how much you love your job, and you really, it does show, and, um, and thank you to little Dobies over there. But I, you know, you're getting all the recognition here, and I thought, you know, he, he needs a little treat as well.
Actually, I didn't do anything.
Oh. But, you know, really, I mean, you know, I'm, I think this is so, it's so awesome, when, when chief told me, I'm just, I'm so proud of you, and I can't thank you enough for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Well, um, of course, we, we, we thank you, and we know how hard you've worked in your discipline and, and work ethic. Um, it, it didn't come, you know, overnight, so, uh, we're very proud of you, and Tarpon Springs is proud of you, so thank you, Tommy, and thank you, Dobie.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terpenny.
Thank you. Uh, it's always exciting for me when there's a presentation from the PD, because usually I get to say how proud I am of you guys, which I am, and especially you, Tommy, and, and I think it reflects, it always reflects well on the PD, on the PD as a whole, when, when somebody does something outstanding, because I look at you guys, and I know you do yourselves, as one body. So it reflects well on the whole PD, uh, anything that you do or Dobies does, and, uh, the last time we got to see you up here, it was a presentation on you and the dog, and we really got to learn a little bit more about you personally, and I just want to tell you how proud I am of you as an individual for everything that you've done in your life and where you are today, and, and the service that you give our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Come on, Tommy. Come on.
So anyway, folks, uh, I was saying, I won't drop my pants, but the dog, when Tommy was hollering at dog Dobies, it came after me, and it bit me right on the butt. Remember that, Tommy? And he said, "Don't tell, don't tell the chief." He said, "He'll fire me." But anyway, I'm so proud of Tommy. Uh, Tommy was in a little dislocation one time, and in the newspaper article, it said, "The only letter of commendation he got was from a funeral director on how well he escorted a funeral." You remember that, Tommy? I'm not going to keep, yeah, you do, too. I'm not going to keep talking, Tom. But, uh, Chris Alahuzis, who, see, when you know me a long time, you call me Tommy, because we grew up together. But Chris's mother used to iron his underwear. And you know who taught him, taught him how to speak English? Me. That's why we're both so bad at it, see? That's it. But his mother would iron his underwear when he was growing up, and he'd come to school, and he would say, "Tommy, look at my underwear, they're ironed." That's true story.
Thank you for the compliments, Tommy.
You want me to sit down now?
No more.
But anyway, I'm very proud. I was born right here in Tarpon Springs, raised here, and I just love the city, and I love having my funeral home and being a part of the community. And as long as I'm here, there will always be more police dogs named Dobies, of course, right? For the City of Tarpon Springs, or anything I can ever do for the police department. Um, you know, and we're talking about another park, a larger park or something. Are you Karen? I got that note from you in the mail, I know I'll forget that, but I didn't do it, Karen. But anyway, you know, I will certainly be glad to step forward and do anything I can, and a new dog park. But thank you all very much, and I'm not running for any office in Pasco County. Sheriff may be yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dobies.
Mayor, if I could ask you to come up, please, to the podium?
Of course.
Tom, we, um...
Yes, sir.
We really appreciate all of your support for our K-9 program, and Tommy and K-9 Dobies, and wanted the mayor to come up, but we want to present you with a really nice plaque on behalf of the police department.
Thank you very much.
So we really, once again, really appreciate your support. You've always been there for us, and...
Anything I can ever do.
Yep.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
And, uh... Thank you for your gentle rush. You're welcome. And thank you for your comments. Is this on TV?
Yeah, it's on TV.
You're going to be getting phone calls tomorrow. I probably will. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I can't see you. Thank you all very much.
Uh, that concludes, uh, our presentation, but once again, Tommy and, and Dobies, I know you got a great future ahead of you, working for the city, and you guys make us shine. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, everybody. We are now going to, uh, consent agenda. Item number three, the minutes. A, May seventeen, two thousand sixteen, regularization. B, June seventh, two thousand sixteen, regularization. C, June twenty-first... C, June 21, 2016, regularization. And D, June 28, 2016. Special events. The Hippie Fest, August 13, 2016, number five, increase. Bid number 160073-B-JJ, compaction ground in Mango Street. Number six, renew file, number 120078-C-CM, lining service. Holiday displays. Number seven, increase file number 160015-C-RS. Dell Computers to Florida State, contract number 32211500. Dash WSCA dash 15 dash ACS. Inc., number eight, increase file 150018-C-RS, water and wastewater supplies. And number nine, award bid number 160112-B-JJ, Public Kayak Canoe Launch Facility. Do you have any item that needs to be pulled? No? Uh, I don't want, I don't have anything to be pulled, but I have questions that, on item seven and nine that I'd like to direct into, uh, Mr. Licuris. Uh, first would be, uh, item number seven. Uh, Dell Computers, Mr. Licuris, which is, um, the technology is moving so quick. And I was wondering if he were, had the opportunity to look and see if it's better to, uh, lease the computers instead of purchase them as we do with the copiers. Maybe it would be more beneficial.
As you know, we were able to secure and hire a fantastic IT director. Um, she did a study into this and looked into both this and we looked into printers. Printers was a savings to do the lease process for. And we're in the process now of changing over and going and leasing the computers. However, for the computers, it was not cost effective to lease them. And probably for the same way, the technology goes so fast and gets replaced. But it actually would cost more money for us to lease them than to buy them in her option. So, um, we chose not to do that, but she did do a full study on that. And again, we were able to save money in the budget you're going to be seeing in a couple of weeks and stuff by leasing all of our printers, which we're in the process. They were doing the one upstairs today, probably when a couple of you came in, they were doing that one. So we're going to be saving money by leasing printers. But as far as the computers themselves, it was more cost effective to buy them than to lease them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Licuris. The next question that I have is related to item number nine, um, that we providing, we're going to provide Public Kayak Canoe Launch Facility at the Splash Park. And it's going to cost 137,000. Can you tell us a little bit about the project?
This is actually a project that I had to move to my bucket list because it was one that was supposed to be completed when we completed the Splash Park, the Dog Park and Fitness Park. That was a long time ago. This was in the original plans and why some of you don't remember, it's been so long. I probably should include it a little more and I'll see you to show you the diagram so you can remember what we talked about, but it was so long ago we did because that area over there, and we learned that when we looked at it previously, there'll be a possible, um, boat ramp. We knew the problems, um, with that area as far as the seagrass stuff. We have been in permitting and this extended time, which I think we're almost at two years, um, to get that permitted for, uh, for a simple canoe and kayla, but kayak launch. But we got a great product to be a place to, you know, as part of that whole park. We're talking about, we're talking about fitness, we were talking about the Dog Park, Splash Park, and a place to encourage our ecotourism, a place where you can go on a beautiful part of the river on the other side of the, uh, bridge and, and explore and go for. And, uh, thank goodness with some hard work of, of some people we had on contract, some engineers and stuff. We are finally, probably two years or more beyond it, finally got the ability to permit it. And you're going to see the one place that people have to actually do it. Actually, the funds of this money, if you remember way back, um, again, it's been a long time and stuff, but half of it's going to be recreation impact money, half of it was, was reserved from the penny money. So even when we did this project long ago, it wasn't coming from our general tax fund. It was coming from both those sources, right? Half of it from, from recreation impact, half from penny. And, um, hopefully, we can get this and hopefully within 90, 120 days, we can get started and get that. And finally, again, finally complete that park that we've been waiting for, for so long. And, uh, by approving this tonight, we can, through the bidding process, this is the best bid. Um, I don't think we're going to have to use the contingency fund. We put it in there just in case of the project. I don't think we're going to need it. Um, so we're ready to proceed and again, finally complete the, the, the North Safford Park, uh, like we had planned through several years ago.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on these items? Any commission comments? No? I know Mrs. Seber will be happy with that.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are planning director.
I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepan?
Yes.
Mayor Alahousis?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item number 10, request to settle administrative, uh, fine or lien for, um, Zero North Jasmine. I will turn it over to the seat attorney.
Um, that's correct. The address is Zero North Jasmine. Here in Tarpon, there are three code enforcement cases, um, against this property for a total fine amount of 114,0386.44. Um, the new owner has offered to settle the finer lien for $3,000. Um, after discussions, the city attorney's office recommends settling the lien for $5,000 plus administrative costs, which are $1,075, totaling, uh, $6,075.
Thank you. Are there any commission comment? Commissioner Panther?
Yes, Mark, do you know, or whomever, I mean, is this anything, um, I don't believe it's, yeah, I don't believe it's a family issue, but is this anything special or any kind of circumstances you want to make us aware?
No, not this one. Is the applicant here? No?
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we take the attorney's recommendation. Second.
We don't have any, uh, public comments, is that right? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepan?
Yes.
Mayor Alahousis?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 11, Resolution 2016-19, Application 16-30, Denimy Holding Slot 64. Again, I will turn it over to the seat attorney to read the title and to explain the process.
Uh, Resolution number 2016-19, Resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 16-34 for site plan approval for a multi-phase boat slash RV storage, office and warehouse project located at 240 Anclot Road, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrency, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date, read by title only. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, um, either on behalf of the applicant or to testify here today? Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ready for staff presentation?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This application is, was actually originally approved back in October 15, 2013. During that time, the applicant, um, wasn't aware that there was a, well, they were aware that the condition existed, but they weren't unable to get their permits due to, um, some outstanding issues within the one-year timeframe. So there is a group of, um, of conditions. And since they could not meet that condition, they needed to come back through the process and essentially get a reapproval. We don't have a process in our land development code that allows them to come to me administratively and say, you know, this was approved, but I didn't get my permit. Can I go forward? So since we don't have any provision like that, they have to basically come back and start through the process. A lot of the work has already been done on this project as a result of them going through the permitting process or at least going through the site planning process previously. So as a result, I'm going to kind of go over the new pieces. The project itself hasn't changed, but the conditions under which that we're planning at this particular time have slightly changed. So as a result, the applicant has asked for a couple of, um, accommodations. One of which was, they previously were locked into a very stringent phasing schedule where phase one would go one year, phase two would come the next year, phase three and then on. Right now, they're only asking for approval for the first four phases of this project. And they're asking for a flexible timeframe of five years. Staff has no problem with that as long as they secure their first preliminary permit within the one-year timeframe. So in the next year, they will have to get their first permit, which will consist of some drainage and some other things because the first phase is really going to be open storage. If later phases, they'll start building buildings and that type of thing. They will have to come back after they finish phase four for phase five through seven, but those are not being approved tonight. They're laid out in the staff report, they're part of the plans because it's a larger project. So you have a chance to see the entire project, even though we're only focusing on the first four phases. Their concurrency review, they have, they, has basically remained the same. There hasn't been any drastic changes in our water, wastewater, solid waste, transportation facilities or any of that in this particular area. So as a result, they're consistent with that. They're consistent with the comprehensive plan. And with that, um, the project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, land development code and the city's concurrency management system and the city's building codes. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan for phases one through four with the following conditions. And there has been one slight change in condition three. I'm going to read all of them in and then I'll highlight that particular condition. Condition one, the developer is responsible for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the land development code. The site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. Um, this is the condition that has slightly changed. Prior to the building permit approval for phase two, an updated environmental assessment, tree assessment must be submitted to the planning and zoning department. The reason why we're making that change to phase two is because there is no real construction that's going to impact any of the, um, to go over tortoises that are on site or many of the trees in that first phase. So really, phase two and beyond are the phases that we really want to capture on, uh, any changes in the environmental conditions or in the trees that are out there. So we want to give them the time to finish that first phase and allow them to provide that information to us. Uh, with that, number four is fire lines required for the proposed buildings and sewage stations with the apparatus and services for RV washdown area shall be installed as part of the phase two construction. Utility service lines and fire lines for buildings three and four shall be installed as part of phase three. At the time, the fire line installed in phase two shall be tied into the fire line, um, the new fire line creating a loop system. City staff reserves the right to require a new site plan if there are major changes or codes. Um, major changes in the codes or the regulations. The architecture of the building must be substantially similar to the rendering submitted by the applicant. The applicant must provide shielded lighting, limit upward projecting light and direct light internal to the project away from Anclot Road. Uh, the site plan shall expire within five years if phase one through four are not complete. And Planning and Zoning Board did hear this application. They asked for some of the changes that you actually see in these conditions. They recommended approval of the project and staff is, again, recommending approval of the project. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, Heather, why was the, what's the reason behind, um, number seven?
Give me one second. Number seven, the architecture of the buildings must be substantially similar to the rendering submitted by the applicant. That's to ensure that what they give you for pictures of the buildings actually looks like what is constructed on site. So when you see those renderings tonight, which are partially in this packet, they're, again, they're not complete drawings. They're renderings of what they're proposing to look like. When it's actually constructed, it's to look like that. That's the intention of that condition.
But if they're, if they're just examples and they're just, they're not even true elevations, isn't that just, I mean, isn't that subjective on whether or not you think it looks like it or not?
I agree, it is subjective, but this, that condition's an original condition to the, the previous approval. So it's something that you can strike if you'd like to strike it, but it was part of that original approval.
I mean, I assume if the applicant had any objections to the approval, they'd probably be here themselves to mock it.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to kind of step away and let the applicant have a moment.
My name is Ralph Hanson. I represent the engineer, the design and the project and the project engineer manager. Unfortunately, uh, my clients got extremely busy in their business. Uh, Olympic painting, Olympus painting, you may be familiar with. And they did not pay attention to some of these conditions and it slipped by them. So now they want to go forward and we're back before you again.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions to ask you, sir. One would be, how many jobs you think, uh, this project will generate?
The whole job when it's through?
The whole project when it's completed.
The four units, the four phases? I'd say about 20, 25.
25 people. Thank you. I know you're going to do that in phases.
Yes, sir.
And, um, when you complete the phase one and then two and three and four, uh, are you going to have facilities for your customers to use, like restaurants and stuff like that?
For the...
Before the building has been placed?
For the, uh, storage of the units, just the storage only.
Yes.
Uh, we're not planning on that because it's normally not done. I mean, I've done a number of these and we've never furnished that simply because the people are not supposed to spend much time there. I mean, it's not a place where they go to work on their unit. It's a place to store it. Now, for the office warehouse, of course, that'll have sewer water and all the amenities that you would have in any kind of, uh, semi-commercial building.
But that's going to come later, right?
Well, there's actually four phases. The first phase is just the open storage. Second phase is the coverage storage for the RVs. Third phase is the first, uh, office warehouse building. And the fourth phase is the second office warehouse building.
I know that the property has many trees there and I believe it was like a 500-some trees. Am I right?
That's on the rear part of the property.
Yeah. Uh, you were aware of our, uh, our tree program that we have here in Tarpon Springs, right?
Yeah, we haven't, that's why, for one thing, we're only getting phase one through four approved because conditions may change in the market and so on. And so, uh, we wanted to plan it in case we wanted to go forward, but there was a limit to, um, how practical that would be. So it was just a matter of waiting to see what happens.
Okay. Thank you. The nine conditions that may be placed with this item, are you, uh, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Well, at this time, I mean, does staff or the applicant have any closing statements? If there are no other further questions of the applicant from the board?
No, just we ask you consideration?
No, we don't.
Okay, at this time, um, the board is to consider the application.
Thank you. Chair, we entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Next item is item number twelve. Application sixteen dash sixty-four, evaluation and appraisal information letter. Mr. Licurz will present this item.
Can I have Heather?
He's going to let me do that. This is a planning and zoning requirement. A few years back, the state changed the way we report on our effectiveness of our comprehensive plan. We used to go through a very arduous process of going item by item, and identifying all of the things in our comprehensive plan that weren't working, or hadn't worked, and pulling all of that information out. The first step was to go through, generate the large report, send that to the state, they would agree with it or not, and then we would, the next year, go through and do a whole slew of amendments. The state recognized that with the reduction in force that they were required to put into place, that they couldn't do that anymore. So now what they've required communities to do is to go through their comprehensive plan, and determine those things that need to be changed in order to comply with state law, or were some type of local issue that we wanted to address. So being fairly new to the community, we worked on, we worked on this, we looked through what had been changed up at, up in Tallahassee, there's only a few issues in the coastal element that really need to be addressed. So we're going to go through and address just what needs to be addressed, and then, as we go through, because we're going to be amending some of the sections of your comprehensive plan to update things, as we go through that update process, we will amend what needs to be updated to make sure that what is in our comprehensive plan is consistent and will work for us. So we've kind of laid out the plan of the things that we know that we need to address, and this is accomplishable in the year timeframe this state gives us. So this is the first, this is basically the letter laying out our plan, that will go to the state, the state will review it, they'll accept it or not. If they don't accept it, they will send us a letter back that'll say, these are the things that we need you to add, we'll go back through this process. We anticipate that they will accept this, there's nothing radically, radical on this letter, it's very mundane, typical things that need to be addressed over time. Your plan is not, is not really evaluated, but on a seven-year basis, so the last time this was evaluated was sometime in the mid-two thousands, so, and it was done through the full process. So as a result, the process now is for the city manager to essentially sign this letter to go up to Tallahassee to be reviewed by the Department of Economic Opportunity, and then they will give us an opinion either way. We expect them to accept this, it's been, the same type of information's gone up on several different communities, so we expect this form to be acceptable to them. And I can answer any questions that you might have, but this is something that's, it's a very process-based thing, and we can get into the details if you really want to talk about the details, but I don't want to bore you with a big long presentation on your comprehensive plan. But I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, I went through the process twice, and it's not, it's not really that.
This is a better process.
Yes, it is. The question that I have is, after you get your okay from the state, and later, we're going to update the elements on the comprehensive plan, you mentioned several of them, is the process going to go through the Planning and Zoning Board, and then the VOC, like it did in the past?
That's correct. The elements, actually, when they're amended, any type of text amendment to your comprehensive plan has to go through Planning and Zoning, and then goes directly to this board. It's only this notification letter system that no longer has to go that preliminary step, they come, it comes right to the decision makers.
Okay, thank you. Any more? Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you, I was just going to ask you, Heather, if this was the first step in the process, in terms of some of the things that we've been talking about, some of the, you know, issues within our land development code, and things that we want to update, this is the first process to do that as a, as a whole, holistically, versus just taking it case by case?
No. What you're talking about is really a land development code issue, this is the comprehensive plan, this is the state mandated process. The updates that we've kind of talked about as a group, and actually, some of your boards have brought forward some changes, you'll be starting to see those changes come through probably faster than this process will happen, because those can be advanced a little bit quicker, because they don't require state review. They require a local review process for that land development code. So that process will still go through Planning Board, because that's your process, your process is Planning Board, and then on to your decision-making board. But, that is a faster process than this, because I don't have that intermediate step where I have to send it to the state for review and wait for them to come back. It goes right through this board, once you've adopted it, that night at the second reading, it becomes law.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Are here now, are any more commission comments? No, I entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Before we go to the item number thirteen, which is the appointment of the code enforcement board, Commission Panther has something to share with us?
Yes, just, real quick, I just, I just want to point out that two applicants for this board position are graduates of the Citizens Academy, it's David Keys and Linda Allen, and one of them, Linda Allen, as you'll see in the back, put this as her first choice, I just want to make you all aware of that, thank you.
Well, first, we need to select option one, or option two. Vice Mayor Terapini, do you want option one or two?
Generally, in a situation like this, I'd move to, move the alternate up, but I feel that, in this scenario, with some good prospects from the Citizens Academy, I'd opt to go to option number two and appoint Linda Allen.
Number two, okay. Commission Panther?
I'll do the same.
Option two. Commission Seber?
Well, I guess I just sort of changed my mind after that, because I do appreciate that Linda went through the Citizens Academy, so I'll go with that, too.
Two. Commission Slattery?
Uh, number two.
Number two. I want to commission, I want option one, but commission two is winning, I mean, option two is winning. Next thing we need to do is to select a person from the list. Commission Slattery?
Linda Allen.
Commissioner Panther?
Linda Allen.
Commission Seber?
Linda Allen.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Linda Allen.
I also select Linda Allen. And now I need, are, are there any public comments on this item? None? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Linda Allen to fill the unexpired term of Justin Vesey.
Second.
Are any commission comments? No. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. That concludes our agenda tonight, and we go to the staff comments. Chief Caution?
No comments, ma'am.
City attorney?
No comments.
Mr. Licurz?
Again, I know it's been talked about, about the picnic and the fireworks yesterday, I think, again, the picnic has grown, and I think that was the biggest crowd we had there. We had a lot of, again, hard-working city employees that worked both there, and of course, the ones, especially police and fire, who worked the fireworks later, so I think it really was a one-two punch, and, you know, we thank, you know, we thank our sponsor, which was Waste Management of the picnic, and, again, they're out there with the snow cones, but the people, really, it just seemed to have grown every year, and we're going to have to think of something for next year, because I think we're going to see it grow even more from this one, and have more successful stuff, we're about running out of space to add things, but it was real successful. The other thing, and I'll have Irene finish what I'm saying, I'll, I'll just start off, but as we talked about tonight, as we're seeing some of the Citizens Academy coming up, also, if you note, the second one you saw from the Citizens Academy, Mr. Keys, Budget Advisory Board, obviously, that's going to be coming to you, because we got some alternates, but it's really too late in the process, we probably got one or two, and we're finished budget advisory with this budget, so that is coming probably within a month or so, so that'll be coming back with some more names, because I think we'll have two to appoint to there, but you don't see that one right now, just because, again, we've gone, they've gone through the whole budget there, at the end, really coming in now, going to his service, but, but, you know, he'll have his opportunity from Citizens Academy when that comes up, and we'll segue it and stuff, go ahead and let them know, so we can, again, get the word out, we've already had some signed up of Citizens Academy, too, that we're going to be starting in August.
Yes, a press release will be going out this week, we'll be starting, we're looking at starting our second Citizens Academy, starting, hopefully, in the second week of August, we're just finalizing the programs with staff, and we'll be, we'll have applications online, if anyone's interested, with the roster of dates, and I will forward the press release as well to the board, if anyone's interested, we'll be happy to send them one, or they can fill it in online.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terapini?
No comments.
Commission Seber?
No comments.
Commission Panther?
No.
Commission Slattery?
Oh, I have comments.
Sure?
No, don't forget Music on the Beach this Thursday, and the fireworks display this year was?
Fantastic.
Fantastic, thank you very much for that. And yes, the picnic in the park, I was amazed when I saw the crowd, really, it's grown so much, and next year, I think our city manager should enter the hot dog eating contest.
I'll second that.
I didn't know they were having one, because I probably would have done it.
I'll lose, but I'll.
It was, it was really, I mean, it was fun, people were just having a good time, and, and, thank you, and we want to thank Waste Management as well, because they were a huge sponsor, and I don't think we could have done it without their donation.
Was that a motion on the floor, from Mr. Licurz entering the contest?
Oh, you want to make a motion? But, again, it was a huge success, and again, thank you, Waste Management for their donation.
And another note from Music on the Beach, the actual, the people we had play was a concert that got rained out.
They were good.
And they were, I mean, it was our kind of music, most of us, well, with the exception of a few up there, it was, it was my age of music and stuff, and, and again, we got them to play there as an altern, because they got rained out at Sunset Beach, but the old music and the memories, they, they were awesome, and they played three hours there, and I think if we'd have got that out more, we'd probably got a bigger draw, because they were a good band playing the old-time music.
Thank you. I also like to congratulate everyone that worked on the picnic, it was, I mean, it was so successful. I got so many compliments for the employees that did such a good job, they added to that they had, to serve the people, was second to none. Mr. Licurz, that train for the kids, it was probably the best I've seen, all the kids were so happy to get on.
Mr. Dolan was the one who found that and brought that to them.
It was great, thank you very much. But you're right, you're right, the music was, it was good, very good. Also like to remind to everyone that July ninth, we have the Nine in the Islands at the Sponge Ducks, and it starts at six P.M. Also like to welcome the new businesses that they come to Tarpon Springs, is Aliza Restaurant on Mike's Blue Crab and Seafood, Pete's Twin and Recovery, Prime American Finance Service, and First Florida Realty, welcome to Tarpon Springs. Thank you very much, and that concludes our regular session, and the time is seven thirty-two. So, Mark, you going to enter the contest?
Nah, I can't, that makes me sick. I couldn't even watch it.
I was looking at this, actually, actually, I was going to give this to Martin.
I had two hot dogs.
I can't show them, man. I really, yeah, the hot dog.
I can.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It makes me nauseous.
I got to tell you a story.
I don't know, I never know.
What's your name?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm so, I'm so, you're the engineer, I'm getting mixed up with a guy downtown.
Oh, you know, and at first I thought he was David.